Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, June 25th. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As usual, we have a jam-packed agenda, but before we get to that, Mr. Hill, would you please read our announcements?
As per usual, we are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: the Bylaw Committee, the Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Ma Quan Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found at the town website, www.hanson-mass.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. This is a reminder that all elected boards, committees, commissions must reorganize at their first meeting after town election and report that reorganization to the town clerk's office. The town clerk's office will be closed all day on Fridays for the summer. Upcoming Select Board meetings are July 9th, 2024, July 23rd, 2024, and August 6th, 2024.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. McDowell, I think temporarily we ought to remove Ma Quan Reuse Committee until we do our little forum that we're going to do in September. And also, I don't think the Community Preservation Committee has any openings, but you might want to check with the chair. Okay. Petition for special legislature. Ms. Green.
Okay. So, non-chair members of the board, this has to do with, actually, it's Article 97, which has to do with the land swap from, between Conservation and the Water Department. It's a little bit complex, I'm going to try and make it simple. There was a parcel of land that had believed to be in the range of 25,000 square acres, and upon a survey, it came back at only like 3,922 square feet, so it was much smaller. We had to go back to town meeting. There was a prior town meeting vote that authorized the parcel land at the 25,000 square feet, but we had to go back to town meeting and have them revote an article that captured the correct square footage of the parcel. This petition here, this basically is going to be a follow-up letter to the special legislation petition that's already with Senator Brady and was in Josh Cutler's office, but we're changing that to David DeCoste's office now. But this is a follow-up to that that we will send over so that they can update the special legislation petition on their end.
Okay. And did you need a vote? Or, I mean, a town meeting obviously voted for this.
Town meeting did vote. The Article 23 of the May 6, 2024 article was voted to adopt at town meeting, so there is a motion here. Do you have a copy of the motion with you? Yeah, so there's the motion for reading on that.
Yes. You've got the copy because you have the one that's in.
Well, that makes sense. "I hereby move that the Select Board of the Town of Hanson adopt the home rule petition as authorized pursuant to Article 23 of the May 6, 2024 annual town meeting and support the same to the General Court."
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great.
Have you signed this copy or another one?
Nope.
This one is stapled for some odd reason, it's a single sheet that's stapled.
Ms. McDowell has the copy to be signed.
So what are you saying?
Ms. McDowell has the copy.
Okay, so that's not the official copy. You can burn that or take it home as a souvenir. I'm going to take a couple of things out of order and then we'll get to the master plan presentation. Ms. Diaz, seeing that you are in the House and inquiring minds need to know, and I know you came specifically to tell us about this, can you let us know what's going on with the transfer station stickers? How do we get one? What's the deadline? What's the cost? All that good stuff.
Yes, I was just talking to Teresa about making sure that the Hanson town website lets people know that they can get it online, which it does, and there's a $3 fee, which also lets people know that they can come into the office.
Okay.
That's $65, and that's for one year. And that starts July 1st, so she said she can get it in a lot, people coming in, so.
Okay. And it's per vehicle? And how many maximum vehicles can you register?
As many as possible.
Okay. All right, so it's $65 in person, $68 online for the convenience fee. You need to have your registration and all that good information either way, whether you do it online or whether you come in to.
Right, you have to be very lenient.
Yep, and that is the key, yes. Did anybody?
My only thing is, it's per, it's not per household, it's per car.
It's per car.
Yeah, it always, yeah.
There's a lot of question.
The first car was 100, the second car was 50.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
It's always been per car, because otherwise you could have people saying that they.
You could have five people.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but it doesn't really matter, it's the same household, they're generating the same trash, but it just, you know, does somebody need to borrow the other car or can they take their own car? I mean, that's really what you.
My household, and there's just two of us, buys three stickers, so, because we have three vehicles and we don't know which one we'll end up taking, and I don't want to organize my life around going to the transfer station, so we just get three.
My house has two that have stickers.
Yeah.
I don't want to be the only one going.
Right. But that's why I'm saying it's, I always, just in my mind, it makes more sense, but it's, that's not the way it is.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
So, the question is, when you said before it was $100 and then the second car was less?
50, right.
Right. How come they don't do that with the 65 and then the second one 40, something like that?
Because of the cost at the transfer station, with the cost of everything going up, we set the price at 65, and then one of the companies is now charging us $51 off over and above what we've been charged now. So it's like you're always trying to keep up with the cost?
Yeah, there are, I mean, you're already struggling with costs.
We are, and we never do this big day.
Yep, yep. And I think the plan is to incrementally.
It is, over the next three years at least.
Yeah. Okay, did anybody else have any questions about that hot-burning topic? And will people be turned away July 1st if they do not have the new sticker?
If they have the old sticker, because if you, at the end of the week, with the holiday coming up, you may not get it back in mail, so.
So there's a small grace period?
Small grace period, but after.
Just don't abuse it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, great, thank you so much for joining us. You can feel free to stay, it's perhaps going to be like watching paint dry, but feel free. We're not dismissing you by any chance. And then the other thing I thought we just might take out of order, because I'm assuming that the Assessor's Office doesn't want to necessarily stay for the duration of the meeting, is we've got, we've got a, it's a bittersweet thing. Good news, bad news. Bad news, Lee Gamache is retiring, her last day is Friday. Good news is Lee is so amazing that she, for years, has been working on developing somebody who could be her replacement, and we're fortunate enough that the Board of Assessors took a vote to appoint Denise Alexander. So, Ms. Green, I don't know if I just stole all of your thunder, but did you have anything that you wanted to say about that?
I think it's a wonderful appointment, and I really look forward to working with Denise in the future.
And it's the Board of Assessors' appointment to make, so we don't really need to take a vote.
Just recognize her appointment as our new town assessor.
Yep, so Denise, we've gone to know you over the years, we're thrilled, you know, that you're willing and able, more than able, to step into those shoes, and we look forward to working with you, and we thank you for stepping up, and.
On the floor too, as well, thank you, I'm really commended about it.
Yeah, all right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did anybody have anything they wanted? You have to give an acceptance speech and you have to sit, no, that's fine, you don't need to do that.
We don't have a microphone in the interrogation.
No, we don't even have a microphone on the interrogation table tonight. Yeah. Yes, we call it the interrogation, you know, all right, did you want to say anything, Laura?
You know, just want to let the town people know that I am an accredited assessor and happened since 2017, and I've been in the assessing field for 14 years, been working in Hanson, love the town, love this town, feel like it's my town, you know, as much as I don't live here, I feel like it's all mine. Looking forward to going forward, we're going to miss Lee, she's one of the best, but I'm really excited, I'm really excited to take on the town, so.
Well, we're thrilled for you.
Thank you, everybody.
And please let Ms. Green know if there's anything our office can do to support you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, with that, we will move to the master plan presentation. And how is that going to work with a missing microphone?
I'm loud.
You have natural projection?
Yeah, I think I do.
All right.
I think I can tell, yeah, it's variable though.
Do we need the computer, the screen?
I was just going to talk and I printed copies.
Yeah, let's just, let's just do it, yeah. Because we're technologically challenged at times, Ms. Green, and I would prefer not to experience that this early in the meeting.
Would you take a motion to accept Lee as, I mean, accept Denise as the assessor?
No, because he's Board of Assessors.
Great, thank you. Color too.
In color.
Oh, what kind of a budget have you got there at OCPC? Color copies?
So, there will be essential binded copies that will be even more pricey.
Did you get a copy?
No, it was only three.
Oh.
It was a lot to share.
Oh, there's only three sharing?
I'm going to share.
All right. Hope to take your word for that.
This is just wait.
Okay.
I thought we were going to talk about it, so.
So, I was just going to give a quick walkthrough of the process that we've been through over the last nine months, because it's a whirlwind of length of the eye at the same time.
So, first, can you tell us who you are and then tell us what a master plan is, because some people watching may not fully appreciate the importance of a master plan and may not have even read the master plan and may not understand the wealth of information that is in there. So if you could give us a little background, that would be amazing.
Yeah, so my name is Riannon Dugan, I work for Old Colony Planning Council, we're the regional planning agency for the town of Hanson, and I was the project manager for the Hanson Master Plan over the past few months. The master plan is designed to be a comprehensive plan that encompasses all other government plans that the town has put forward, and is a guide for creating any bylaws or zoning changes in the future. It is also a recap of historical change in town and future projections in terms of population, land conservation, businesses. A master plan covers housing, economic development, land use, open space for recreation, natural and cultural recreation, resources, sorry, and public services and facilities and transportation. This one also features a chapter on sustainability and climate resiliency, and this is for the town to meet their commitments for their hazard mitigation in municipal vulnerability preparedness plan in the state of Massachusetts. So this plan should be a guide not only for the Select Board, but the Planning Board and Conservation Commission and all other land use boards. Over the next 10 or so years, we're sticking with 10, sticking with 10 years, so I'll see you all in 2034, we'll do it again. But this gives a list of goals and actions for the town to strive for based on community input and data.
Okay, great. So the process you used was rather laborious.
We did a little bit of everything. We had a community survey that went out, about 257 responses. Those responses are captured, there will be a full appendix that's not printed in front of you, which will show the full length of survey answers, but there is a chapter cover sheet for each chapter that gives some of the relevant survey responses to each section. In addition to that, we had three public meetings. The first one was hosted by the Planning Board during a Planning Board meeting to introduce the process. We also held a second one at Camp Kewaunee, it was an evening meeting. There was an option for a hybrid online, we did not have attendance for it that night. And we had a third public meeting at the library just this past week on June 20th, and that one was also hybrid, and the recording of that will be posted shortly when I revamp the website to show that this is a completed project. In addition to that, we met with a vast, I won't say all, but we met with the vast majority of department heads, and we also sat in on a few boards that work in land use, such as the CPC and Conservation Commission, and we met with the Planning Board numerous times to get this to the finish line. And in addition to that, there was an extensive amount of research that went in, there's a whole completed community profile that you can find on the master plan's webpage, and that is a recap of all of the census and state data that goes behind putting these plans together. The website will remain active, it's been active for the length of the project for people to check in and see what's going on. It was one of the most visited webpages for OCPC last quarter, so people have been clicking through and checking out what we've been doing. There will be digital access to the plan in PDF form there, this website is hosted on the OCPC page. The finalized PDF just got sent to Tony this afternoon, and that'll go up on the town website shortly. We went before the Planning Board last night, and they approved it pending several edits that were just really wording changes and allowing me to add the addition of one graphic. We went ahead and did that this afternoon, and I just finalized the PDF before I headed here. So, happy to answer any questions or go into detail about anything else in the process.
Did anybody have a question, any questions?
No.
Did you want to have a look-through? Give us like a brief, you know, like highlight of things that you, you know, like a Cliff Note version?
Sure. One of the big jumpouts in terms of positives for Hanson is that you guys have done an excellent job with having permanently conserve land, not just land that's in temporary conservation, which I'm sure you all know, you guys have great open space and recreation in town, and that was something that I felt was really highlighted, not only by the facts and data and maps that we went through, but also community response. A lot of the goals in here also echo the other plans that have been up to date and have been being worked on, that includes your housing production plan, we echo the same goals of creating affordable housing and a diverse housing stock for young families and seniors who are in need of housing that's affordable in Hanson. We also, let's see what we're up against on highlights. We talked about moving forward with the High Street Park Plan, there's a draft plan, we got the initial draft outlines included in this plan in hopes of seeking funding for that moving forward to start to revamp that part, I think that'll be a really big exciting project for the town over the next coming years.
I hope so too. Funding remains elusive and particularly in light of our MBTA vote, potentially nonexistent, but we're going to, we're going to try. So, yeah, I hope so too, because a lot of hard work has been done to get us to the point that we're at now. Mr. Wick, should you?
I just got a real curveball question, not to put you on the spot, so if you don't have the answer, that's totally fine. I just happen to be just reading through the Mont Ponce piece, and I used to live there back in the day, so it kind of strikes a chord with me. Just, it's still listed in here as trying to get a management system to try to get that entire neighborhood on a sewer? And I'm just out of curiosity, because I've always, I've always wanted this, and it's just out of sight, out of mind, it just reminded me now, how come that area is always kind of singled out as being the place that might get a sewer versus any other sector of town or the entire town as a whole? Why is, why is that one just being singled out?
I'll let Tony correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think part of it is the amount of wetlands surrounding that area, so if a septic system fails, it just, it's such an area of risk for water quality that with the potential for septic failure or septic overflow, you just pose so much risk to the town's water supply.
Yeah, you have, Mont Ponce is a very dense neighborhood, so you have a dense neighborhood, then you have two bodies of water there, one of which is having issues already.
Yeah.
So, if you look at it as a need in the overview of the town, you'd say that that area probably has the greatest need because of the density and of the environmental impact.
Oh, that makes sense, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, I hope it's, you know, it's an intense document, but hopefully everybody will have an opportunity to read it, and I would really like to use it as a back, you know, sort of like a reference document for our future strategic planning sessions, because I think this has got a lot of good info for us.
I wish I had brought that, that sheet in though, that had business in town, and I, it was in another packet that we got, and I think it was OCPC.
It was, yeah.
But I was curious, because there was quite a bit in there that didn't make a lot of sense, and there were businesses that would have fit in those economic categories that weren't even included. And I found that, I found the whole business data to be very lacking, it wasn't right.
Yeah, there was a list of businesses, does that sound familiar, like the top, the largest businesses in town?
Yeah, employers.
And Mrs. Rain sort of like independently went through it, and she was like, oh, I, yeah, she said, she said this is not.
Yeah, employers, yeah, yes, 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 I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong term, but yes, employers. And I'll, for example, I personally know someone who has a business in the industrial park that would have fit right in with the 10 to 49, and he's been in business here for years, and it's not included.
All that data comes from what the state captures based on what they report for employees. So if.
Oh, they're important, I don't want to cast any dispersions, he's a legitimate reporting businesses.
No, no, that was like, I know where we get the website.
Right.
It's the state's calculation.
So did the state not, I mean, did they cherry pick?
Or depending upon what they filed, what the business filed with the state?
Yeah, good.
Also, right, so one thing that gets messy.
How old is the data too? That's the other thing I was thinking.
Sure, yeah, the other thing that I know gets messy is like if a business has buildings in two different towns, which I don't know if that's true for this business, okay, businesses basically have, if they have regional or if their income's split between two buildings and two locations, it does sometimes leave their employee numbers.
Who's has a question?
Oh, so what's the best, just a minute, Mr. Young, what's the best way for Mrs. Rain to get her concerns to you? Because the stage where now is you're looking for, is this considered final or you're looking for?
This is considered final, it was approved by the Planning Board last night, I'm still happy to look up that information.
Okay.
The town self-inishes to me.
I actually have it out in my car, I think, the sheet that I was looking at, I believe it's.
The information you received, Jason, newest team member at OCPC, Housing and Public Engagement, senior planner, might have been from the, one of the presentations that we gave around the master plan, which was like a snapshot.
It was a snapshot.
Sort of like, so was it like all employers in town with that X number of employees? Sort of like top five or?
Well, it was interesting, because he would have been, he would have been in one of the top five. This is what I mean, I mean, it just was not complete data from what I could see.
So that would just be missing from the state's data set, I'm happy to take a look at the site that we use and send it, so that way we can see if there is a misreporting with the state.
Right, and there was another, there was another one, Kane, something or other, he's alone, and it said he had 10 to 49 employees.
Yeah, there were a couple that we.
It was like, the data was all over the place, it wasn't right.
We're not questioning you, but we're just like.
It's the data, you.
Yeah, it just didn't sync up, and so we just thought we'd mention it, because this is going to be, you know.
Businesses and employers are very keyed into them because I want them to grow, I want them to be more.
The top list of employers isn't in the final master plan, it's just.
No, I saw that, I looked right for it.
Yeah, it's in, it was in some of the data that we were presenting to the town to talk about what types of businesses we see in town. So, the only businesses that are listed was we listed some of the active farms that are in town.
Right.
We also did note that most of the farms that are working in town are not listed on the mass grown site, which is a great resource for them to advertise their farm if they sell goods. So I was able to fill in which farms were in town based on community feedback.
That's great.
But that's in there too, which is something.
So maybe, maybe the agricultural commission could reach out, if you guys, you know, get that poppin' again, you could reach out to the, to folks and let them know that that's a good resource.
It is, if they want.
If they want to be.
If they want people at the farm.
If they want, yes, yes.
Exactly. If you're doing your people quiet.
Yes, exactly. Mr. Young, if you can state who you are. Yep.
Bruce Young, 592, New York Street. Are you going to put a copy of this, of the last master plan, up on the town website for years? So, are you going to put a copy of this?
Sure, yep, absolutely, yep.
Interesting, just my standpoint, look at both of them, see how many of the goals, you send them the last one, the goal fall into the new one. Would be.
Yeah, it would be. I think it's so easy to get caught up in the day-to-day reactivity of the job that it's, you know, it isn't often that you're harkening back to the master plan, and I will say, this board's pretty good, like, we've had strategic planning sessions, we've set goals, but that hasn't always historically been the case with every board, so it probably would be a good exercise the beginning of every year to whip this out and say, oh, what actions can we take this year towards our goals?
I will also note, Tony will have a copy of an Excel sheet that just lists the goals and actions all together in one table with who's likely the person that would enact them.
Well, that would be incredibly helpful, yes.
That board will be filtered through what their likely response.
That way we don't have to sort through and try.
No, no, I'm asking.
That's great.
So that will be available, and then you guys can share that interdepartmentally, so that way everybody's at least looking at the same resource.
I would really like to use that as part of our strategic planning to kind of like look through and like do a refresh and say, okay, these are some subjects that came up from this comprehensive study, who's going to take responsibility, where are we at, let's do some timelines, let's prioritize which ones we're going to work on this year, et cetera, et cetera, so at least we've got like a good foundation. So I thank you guys, all of you, for all of the work, because I know this is a super comprehensive, lots of meetings, lots of notes, you know, all hands on deck, and I was, I know it sounds kind of, I don't know, maybe polyannish, but I was a little bit thrilled with you getting over 200 responses to the survey, because sometimes apathy can set in, and people are like, oh, nobody's ever going to listen to me, why bother responding? But those that did are memorialized in this plan for the next 10 years.
We were thrilled too, we were stuck at 80 for a while, so we were thrilled to see those numbers go up.
Yeah, so that's great. Did you have anything you wanted to chime in with, Mr. DeBries?
No, just wanted to say that it's been great work from both the Land Council, they did an awful job, Planning Board is very happy, again, they voted to approve it last night, they passed it in rounds, and said, one of the recommendations they had made last night to the Planning Board is maybe either every quarter or twice a year, the master plan, I'll take a look and see how the goals that we can achieve through, you know, funding over in town. The other thing that's great, thank you for sending this project, it's worth a few grand, so it was, it was a bit helpful to town.
That is amazing, yeah. So thank you so much, you were a delight to work with, and we seldom hear the words, "the Planning Board was happy." That alone is worth its weight in gold, so that is amazing, and no offense to the members of the Planning Board. So, any other questions, comments? No, everybody's good? All right, well, thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time today.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, I hope you love your plan.
Okay, that brings us to special town meeting recap and next steps. Ms. Green.
Okay, so Monday, June 17th, we had the special town meeting to address some options for the budget. As, just to recap, the May annual town meeting voted to not accept the school assessment, which meant we rejected it and went back to the school committee, who voted the same assessment and then sent it back to the town, which required us to have a special town meeting, additional special town meeting. The special town meeting was very well-attended, I think there were over 400 attendees that night, although I don't have the final count, and they voted to move forward and adopt the budget, the cuts to the budget that the finance committee had recommended to the board, and the board voted to align with the finance committee of those cuts. So here we are.
Well, I just want to be super clear, that was not the preference of this board.
No, it was not.
But what we had to do was, we were required to place on the warrant a method by which the full assessment could be funded. So I just want to be super clear about that. The way that the warrant was structured was such that the. Um, the way that the warrant was structured was such that the first mo- motion was for, um, the, the stay the course motion, I will call it, which was to continue with, um, the, the five percent increase that had been voted at the prior town meeting. Um, and while, um, I'm thrilled that there was, um, engagement, um, and clearly I have to say kudos ladies, um, to you on, um, all of the, uh, Facebook posts, signage, electronic signage, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think in part the issues drove the attendance, but I think we also, um, you know, um, definitely engaged people. Um, I saw a lot of faces at both town meetings that I had never seen before. Um, and I think that's a good thing, whether the vote goes the way I personally wish it would have gone or not. Um, and I'd love to see more people getting engaged, getting interested. It's their town. It's their town. It's their tax dollars. So I guess, um, it was, so that option two, um, was, um, voted and, you know, uh, you know unanimously by town meeting, um, which results in a cut of hours. Um, and after town meeting, it occurred to me, which isn't super helpful, um, but that we really didn't articulate at town meeting what cuts were being made. Yes, it was there and the, it was there in the warrant. It was, the information was there. It was there. Uh, when I said that we were gonna be cutting positions, you know, uh, Mr. Young got up and talked about the transfer station. Um, uh, but, and, and Mrs. Westfield got up and made the point that she didn't want those positions to be cut, that she wanted to use stabilization. Um, Mr. Young had talked about free cash. Um, our finance committee, you know, it's their role to tell us to, um, be cautious in using either of those sources of one-time, um, funds. Um, but I am heartsick, um, at the position that we find ourselves in, where people did not want to vote to pay additional taxes for the schools, but they wanted to cut town services to pay the school assessment. Um, and I, I think we, you know, all feel, um, a little queasy about that because we don't really have anything to cut. You know, we're cutting border health, we're cutting, you know, conservation. And, and as we said at the last, um, at town meeting, and we've said ad nauseam, um, we don't have, we're not a huge town hall. We don't have like hundreds of employees, you know. We, it's like twenty people, like maybe even less, but twenty people, um, and, uh, doing critical functions. Uh, a lot of which day-to-day you won't have any interaction with. You really, you know, if people are doing their job well, it's behind the scenes and they're unsung heroes and you have no idea what they're doing, but they're doing it well and things go along seamlessly. But when you start cutting, you're gonna start seeing an impact and it may impact your life. Uh, you may have a permit you need to get, or you may need to get in contact with somebody in conservation or border health, or, you know, you go to the transfer station. Well, now it's gonna be open one day less than it was. These are things that impact people's daily lives. Um, so, you know, it was, it was disheartening. Um, but the vote is what the vote is and we've always said we'll deal with whatever the results are and we'll do the best we can with what we get. Um, that said.
Right.
We know we're looking at an override next year. And there's, and, and if this isn't, you know, I know people are like, oh, they're gonna cut fire, you know, they're gonna threaten to cut fire and police. They always do this. This is their go-to move. We have nowhere else to go. We have nowhere else to go. We've, we've cut one fire, one highway guy from a department of five. I mean, you know, that, that's literally what we've done. And then we've cut, you know, other services and there's, there's nothing else that can be cut. It's gonna, you know, um. So, um, and I'm concerned, um, with that on a number of different levels. Um, not the least of which, um, you know, I think if anybody bothers to listen to their scanner, they'll hear that on, it used to be that periodically we would have the two ambulances out on a run and would have to get mutual aid. Now it's become like, uh, 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 several times a week this is happening.
Yeah.
Um, so we're very thinly staffed. We're very thinly staffed on the police. Um, and we have got the building, um, that is on Main Street, the Egan Building that's about to come on board. And with the, with the, uh, building on Phillips Street that's already come on board, we've seen an uptick in police and fire calls because that's what happens when you have multifamily units. It's, you know, statistically you've got more people, you're gonna have more calls. Um, so, um, it's concerning. Um, we're at a place where we're already thinly staffed with the population we have now and we've, we've got these other, um, you know, buildings coming online. So I know you have been working on, um, communicating about, you know, the override, et cetera, et cetera. But I think, um, where are we at in terms of having conversations with the people that were impacted? To the extent you can talk about it and it's not being discussed in union negotiations. Um, and, and how is that impacting ours? Uh, you know, what days people are working?
So we, actually, we, we had a, um, the first meeting today. Um, and I will provide the board with more information in the executive session.
Okay.
Um, people that are impacted are, are notified, um, through requirements of notification. So they are notified. And again, um, I'll be bringing that information, um, in the executive session. It was a development, so, um, I actually look forward to speaking with the board tonight on this.
Okay.
But that, that's where we are right now. Um, conversations need to happen with the departments that are impacted as far as ours. Um, and where we have a new assessor coming on board, um, the conversation basically was gonna take place tomorrow on hours and things like that. So, um, and some of the other departments that are impacted, um, Board of Health, again, conversations need to take place with their governing board of health, um, on hours. And then proposals brought back to the union and then back to the board. So we're still taking these small steps, um, with, with coordinating everybody to meet. Uh, we have another meeting on Thursday again, so we're working diligently to hopefully have this all wrapped up by the first or shortly thereafter.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate that. Um, do anybody have any questions, comments?
I have comments.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think, you know, I echo everything you're saying about, you know, walking out of there in, in a way, feeling like we're supporting the schools, but at the same time, um, really understanding the gravity of what those cuts mean, um, and what that's gonna look like moving forward. I applaud everybody that was so invested, that showed up, and the ones that couldn't show up just because, just because they weren't there doesn't mean they don't care. Um, everybody that cared, that shared their ideas, their thoughts. I love the idea of folks trying to, on the, on the floor, um, understand the gravity of that and trying to find creative ways to find extra dollars somewhere to try to save jobs. I think that is incredibly selfless, selfless and fantastic. Um, what I'm concerned about though is that we've, you know, we've spent the last two years, three years, I wanna say two years conservatively, really advocating for the increases in these hours and these jobs and these positions. Um, we put our, our foot forward to the town a couple of times and they've seen the need. So therefore they've invested in the increased hours, the increased, you know, positions and whatnot. So it's recognized universally, for the most part universally, that those jobs and those hours were needed. And now we're finding it ourselves in a position where we're, we're taking two steps back.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't want to be pessimistic about what the future's gonna look like. I am optimistic about it. But what, what I guess, what I would ask is, we are in a position where two years ago, we needed to make, we need to take out of free cash to fund the budget, which is a, it's a huge no-no because you can only do that so many times. This time we were looking at doing that and thankfully we didn't do it because I feel like although it, it is a selfless act to try to pull out of that to save jobs, so I totally get the motivation behind it. We're one bad break away from having something that we cannot fund in terms of capital projects, buying something new. There's only so many avenues we can pull from. And plus it's not a good practice to pull out of free cash every year to, to, to fund the budget. So I guess my ask is for, for folks that are, you know, really interested in this, that, that have these creative ideas to kind of come out as we're planning the budget for the, inevitably for October and then for, for May, is if you have any ideas on how to, how to solve this problem. Because we are looking for an override. Obviously, we're gonna be looking that path. But just like this last time around, it's not guaranteed that it's going to happen and we don't have any other places to cut. I mean, even if we find on paper places to cut, just like this time around, we couldn't afford to cut them. Let, let's be honest. I mean, we wouldn't have asked the town to fund these positions and these hours if we, if they weren't necessary. So cutting them, I mean, people are gonna be doing more with less. And what I'm afraid of is, just as hard as it is to recruit talent, burnout and being stretched too thin causes retention problems. And I don't, like, it's bad enough that we have a workforce here, uh, workforce shortage just across the state, but I don't want to put unnecessary burden on folks that are working really, really hard anyways. So I guess my, my, just using the platform here and the opportunity just to ask if people have creative ways of turning this around, I'd like to start the conversation now rather than on the floor of, of town meeting. It is inspiring to see it. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
But I'd like to start it now because we're, 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 we're really gonna be fighting uphill.
Yep.
Uh, we said it two years ago and we are, we're facing that, you know, that, that brick wall now. Um, so yeah, that's my only two cents.
Yep. Mr. Young.
I, I was, I was taken aback by the, the first vote, um, because the town basically voted twice to not fund the override, the, the additional money for the school. And then at this meeting, they did. And I think it was the, the people that actually attended, unfortunately leaned one direction. We have no control of that. We don't have email addresses of everybody in town to say, come on out. And, and a lot of emails went out that got people on the other side to come. Um, one thing, a meeting we had here beforehand, we were talking to the school committee, a couple of school committee members who said they were gonna bring out information on the budget about what money was, um, like what the, what the differences were, why there was that big gap, why they needed so much more money. And they were going, it was gonna be explaining it and hand it to the people at town meeting. Unless I totally missed it. I didn't see that.
There was a handout.
There was a handout.
And, and Mrs. Niffen did get up and, and describe essentially what she had said to us of, of the nineteen positions that were lost and then positions that were added and da-da-da-da-da. Um, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I mean, there's so many, there's, there's all kinds of stuff going on, you know, about the chapter seventy money and the busing and, and there's a lot. My, my one concern I have leaving that meeting was, we made it, we made a decision to cut staff based on their budget, which is not written in stone yet, right? They, they could still get more money from the state.
They undoubtedly will get more money at the way things are going.
So what does that do to the jobs that we just cut?
Exactly. There's no, there's no redo on that. We don't get the money, the additional money that they end up getting as a result of the legislature. And, and it looks like the House and the Senate are gonna vote for additional money for busing reimbursement and for the per pupil. Um, that will be additional money that they keep and it will not impact our assessment at all.
That goes right to the school committee.
Yep.
And.
Well, not to the district, but yeah.
But, but the district.
Yep.
That, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. If, if we knew that beforehand, wouldn't they, wouldn't they make their budget based on knowing how much the state was going to be giving?
Well, it wasn't a certainty. Remember I had asked that question of Mrs. Stafford?
Yeah.
Um, and she went to, um, to Mr. Simonak and he said, um, it's not a certainty yet. It hasn't been absolutely approved, um, because you've got the governor's budget, the House, the Senate. And so they didn't know which one was gonna pass, but regardless of which one passed, they all had more money.
That's right.
Right, but if this, if, so you're saying if the school assessed X amount of money and then they get, I don't know, another hundred, however much more, that just goes into their free cash?
Because they're projecting, yes.
Because we just laid off people based on.
They're projecting what the revenue is gonna be.
Well, he, it could have been reflected a little bit better in the scare tactic email that went out that generated most of those people showing up at that meeting. And I'm, I, I mean, that to me is, I'm sorry, my, I don't have anything positive to say about it other than the fact that that school department needs to be reined in. It's out of control. And the attitude was, it was astonishing to me when they sat there talking about the five people that weren't going to come back. We're laying off, or not laying off, yeah, but we're cutting the hours of people that have, that are full-time, that are now gonna, they, I don't know if they're gonna lose their benefits yet or not. I, I, I understand that there's some debate about that. They're not retiring. They want their jobs.
Yeah.
They're not leaving. And to use that, and they said, they said it again at the town meeting. It infuriates me. That's not true. That's propaganda. You are, you are lying to people by twisting words. And it just really bothers me and I guess I just gotta learn to get over it.
No, I, I, we, we all said it. I wasn't sure.
I, I mean, there's more in my head, but I, I just, I could keep going on and on, you know. The raises that they handed out versus the raises that we handed out.
Exactly.
Is night and day. They, they basically are handing out raises as if it's just free money. And it's, it is to them, it is free money.
It's on money.
Because it, it basically, if they can get enough people to come to town meeting and vote on one, one specific article, they could, they could ask for another million next year.
The debt is stacked. Yeah, the debt gets stacked.
Yeah, all the time. Yeah.
That's, I mean, we just can't keep, keep under the control.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
People need to realize who they're voting for.
That's right.
You wanna put these people in there that have husbands, wives, probably all kinds of family, working for the school system, that are running the school system. It's such a conflict of interest, it's not even funny.
Yeah. That has, I have heard people.
What's her name's husband there? He's, he's an employee there. It's just, it's crazy.
Well, we don't know what, I, I don't know what, what disclosures people have filed. I, I have, you know.
The disclosures shouldn't matter. The fact of the matter is, is that they're, they're on a board that they're gonna fight like mad to keep their money flow coming into. I understand you have to keep talent. I get that. I know throughout business, throughout everything, I know that. But at the same time, letting these people vote themselves these ridiculous pay raises.
It's not about the kids and the education.
This has got nothing to do with the kids.
It's about the, they're, they're money.
And then they threaten the kids' education.
Exactly. It's not about the kids.
I will say one thing that I really would like to try to focus on and I, I, um, I have not heard, um, and I, I can't say that I've listened, you know, minute by minute in excruciating detail to every school committee meeting. Um, I, I, but I've listened to the meetings where I thought, um, things that were going to impact us were being, um, discussed, particularly budget. Um, I would like to get more clarity on the administrative costs, um, at the school. Um, and I'd like to have a better understanding of the contracts, um, that we've got with the, uh, senior administration and with their offices. Um, and I, and I'd like to have a better understanding of how that can be compared and contrasted with other, um, similar schools.
Don't we have a forensic audit?
We, we, so Ms. Green, where are we with that?
Where are we?
With the never-ending, never-executed forensic audit that just is like the never-ending story that goes on and on and on.
Okay, so there has been some updates on that. Um, so basically, um, Superintendent Jeff Simonak, um, they did state that they needed to wait to see what was gonna happen with the, the budget. Uh, they're waiting on, they were waiting on the new finance director to come in. Um, basically I reached out to Jeff and, um, David King, who is working with, um, Mark Abrams on the audit. Um, they were going to reach out and schedule a meeting with Jeff Simonak and, um, David King and Mark Abrams to start the audit moving forward finally. It would've kind of been stalemate, um, based on John Stanford giving his resignation and everything going on, but now it looks like.
That far.
Well, which, the resignation to the district, not to us.
Oh, to the district.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm like, I'm like, what?
No, no, not to Tommy. No, it's, it's not too long after that now that we, we did have that conversation. Yeah, it's, it's not too long after that, but, um, yeah.
I, I did, uh, reach out to Superintendent Simonak and just say, uh, you know, the town meeting voted, um, to move forward, please be sure to reach out to Dave King, um, and set up meeting dates to the town to move forward with the audit. So, and Whitman is closely watching this as well. So, and Whitman is closely watching this as well.
And I, I would very much, um, like to, um, have, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about this, but I'd like to get some Freedom of Information Act requests in, um, to the district, um, to ask about the current contracts. Um, and then to the extent that they're be, being renegotiated, I'd like to find out, um, what those dollar amounts are for the renegotiated contracts. And again, I don't want to be a school committee member. If I had wanted to do that, I would have run for school committee. I don't want to micromanage the school committee. But what I do want to know is what is it that they're looking at versus what we're looking at? And how is the conclusion that us cutting our staff is appropriate in light of what I believe are probably extraordinary increases? At least I've been led to believe.
Two percent pay increases.
Right, when we're doing two percent. We're, 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 we are implementing austerity measures and I do not believe that the schools are doing the same. And I'm, I'm being a little bit sarcastic, but I.
We need a good school committee.
I still think that we need to, I mean, we brought it up back in May. I don't, we still need to not get an email back saying, send me your email, email me your questions that we have.
Right.
I, I don't, I still don't understand. We're a month in and we still don't have a meeting with even our members. I mean, I want to have a meeting with the entire school committee. I don't understand why we can't have a meeting with our four members, representatives.
Yeah.
But we need to. At a certain point, and the idea is, even if we're trying our best to find a way to come together, we need to find a way to support them in giving the, the entirety of the townspeople their voice. Because what I, what I, what's kind of maddening to me is this feeling of us versus them all the time. And I don't feel like there's a true appreciation for how intricate the budget actually is. Because we're going to be catching flack as, as, it's going to be our override, right? It's going to be an override that we have to. It's going to be our mismanagement of the budget. It's going to be us cutting jobs. And, and I'm okay with taking the heat, but only when it's appropriate. Like, what, what we're doing is, for whatever reason, we're kind of falling on the sword in a way that I don't fully understand why we're not pushing this harder. We have representatives and for the, for the foreseeable future, I think we really have to kind of make it known that they have representatives that we have no control over, that we have been openly asking to have conversations, transparent conversations, meetings. They don't have to have a quorum. They don't have to even necessarily make decisions. But I think it would be incredibly helpful if we had people here to say, do you understand? Not in a patronizing way, because what I'm about to say is, I don't want to come off as patronizing, because I don't mean it to be. But like, do you understand how this impacts the larger budget, the larger focus? I understand that there's, there's, they're still probably not thinking that the, the assessment that came through that was approved was a win for them. Because they are looking for a lot more than that. But I don't fully understand, think that there's an appreciation for how much we're going to be licking our wounds in the foreseeable future. And that's a problem for me.
I, I agree with that. Um, so, um, can we, um, reach out, um, to, um, I, I'm not sure what the protocol is here on this, because we're kind of like paving new territory here. But, um, uh, if we can reach out to maybe Beth Stafford and, or, or if we should reach out directly. But if you could inquire, um, whether we ought to be reaching out directly to the four members that represent Hanson. I do want to, look, I don't know if we can effectuate any change in the way that people are voting or the way they're thinking about it, but I certainly would like to try to educate people about what the downstream effect is if they continue down the road that has been continued.
But I think that's part of my problem, though, is that we, we, we're, we're trying to make budget amendments on the floor of town hall. Uh, at the town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, I, I respect the enthusiasm and the idea and the desire to save jobs and all of that stuff. But that stuff doesn't, it's not supposed to happen on town meeting floor. It, it's welcome, the conversation, the debate is fantastic, but what about the whole year leading up to that? And I want to just know why, again, every vote matters. People elect the folks that they choose to represent them, and I don't know where the disconnect is. Because you and I, all of us here know that when we have one-off conversations with folks, we're getting a very different answer than what we're seeing in terms of the voting record, and I don't understand why.
The disconnect is, they get a few little tidbits of information. They're not here at the meetings. We have, we have a couple of people that frequently come to our meetings. And they know what's going on. They, they're, they're hearing what we hear. Everybody isn't. And then they make decisions on, I, what I consider to be faulty or inadequate information. And they think that, you know, like, I just, I saw on.
Inadequate, I would say.
Inadequate information. I just saw on, 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 in several threads on Facebook, the board of selectmen should be reining in that school department, blah, blah, blah. It's like, we've told, they don't get it. They don't get it. We do not control the school board. We don't.
Do you think we would be cutting people at town hall if we had control over that?
Well, I think it goes back to a very simple act.
We're, we're just going to, I definitely will call on you, but we're just going to kind of like have a conversation here and then, then we'll take questions from the, um, that's, we kind of deliberate and then we'll, we'll bring you in on it. One of the things that I do want to, um, mention that has been brought up again and, um, i- is the, the thought of the deregionalization.
Which I would love to see.
Well, so we had that study done.
We can't afford it, and that's my problem.
We had the study done, but I was talking to Mr. Hill just prior to this meeting. And, um, you know, I think it might be time, even though we know the study was already done, uh, maybe it's time for us to brush it off again, make sure we've got the detail that we need to.
Make sure that it's written in a manner that people can actually understand, because I understand.
I don't know where we're going to come up with the money to do this, because that consultant was pretty expensive. But, um, but, but maybe just try to, um, Ms. Green, I don't know if you could contact the people, folks who did that. I know it was a couple of years ago. I'm sure there'll be some kind of a cost for a refresh, um, or for them to even come to our meeting. Um, but can you just make inquiries? Because I, I think this whole board needs to discuss this again, um, in particular, the K through eight deregionalization. Uh, we know that to extrapolate ourselves from the high school level would be, um, much more difficult, much, much more costly.
From nineteen fifty-six, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that was nineteen fifty-six, wasn't it?
I, I, I have heard, and I, I have to, I have to, um, I have to say, I have, and, and this is not, I'm not hearing, I'm not talking about extremists saying things to me about this. I'm just talking about average Joes, average person, saying this is befuddling. Uh, I feel like the town of Hanson has no control over the fiscal spend through the schools. And, and in a sense, they're right. Other than who you elect to the school committee, um, you know, we don't have any control over that. We wouldn't necessarily have control over it even if we deregionalize. But the town would, um, have more control over what is being spent on K through eight. Um, so, uh, what, what do you guys think about that? Do you want to talk about it again?
I think we're going to talk about all of it, because one of the things that really, um, stood out was just the act of, you know, the five of us voted to kick the assess, the assessment back, right? And, but the townspeople overwhelmingly voted to approve the assessment. And it makes it look like, well, yeah, but I mean, it makes it look like that somehow we were against the school. And that, and I, I really just want to drive home the point that we all have our individual reasons for why we, uh, voted no, uh, for that and to kick it back. Um, but the, the, the problem that I have is, it just goes back to the same thing. Like, how do we get to a place where we're having these really, really robust conversations around the spending and the revenue generation that doesn't, that doesn't result in some type of catastrophic cuts? Because us voting no does not mean that we don't support this, or us voting in the way that we did at town meeting does not mean that we did, because I know the no meant yes, and I don't want to confuse what I'm trying to say. But we voted the way we voted simply because we were trying to strategize every which way to do what we could to, to, to get the spending under control and to have some understanding of what the future might look like. Now, we're playing catch up and we're trying to work on Plan B. And we can't, we can't continue to go budget after budget, year after year, May after May, trying to figure out how to put the pieces back together.
No, yeah.
Conversations soon.
You're, you're right. And I think, I think we, we're trying to look at things holistically. We understand the schools are always going to be a huge part of our budget. That's a given. We know that. Um, and they always have been and they'll continue to be. But we also have competing needs. We've got a lot of other things in town that we have got to take care of, and that's our responsibility. That's what we have taken an oath of office to do. Um, so, it, it, I, I really want to be clear. I, there's nobody here who is against, against the schools. That, that, there's, I would actually say to you that part of our earlier discussion about looking into the costs for administration, my, my position on it is, I'm, I'm in support of the schools. What I'm asking is, can we be prudent about the money that's being spent? And can we be very careful about the money that's being spent, just like we're doing here? I'm just asking our peers to do the same thing on the school committee, and maybe they are. I don't have the data, so I can't say that, but I just would like to, you know. Did anybody have any, because I feel like I've put this poor gentleman on hold for long enough. Sir, if you can tell us your name and address, and we would love to hear from you.
My name's Peter Orfano. I live on four one eight Washington Street. You guys are talking about the same five points over and over again. My question to you, on the point of, we tried to let people know, I've lived in this town for a couple of years now. You talked about Facebook. I've never seen you guys post anything on Facebook. If it wasn't for Mr. Young, I wouldn't have even known.
We absolutely have posted. We absolutely have posted on Facebook, on our website, at our meetings.
Aren't doing enough, you say, to reach out to the people living in this town. I certainly had no idea, right? So.
You had no idea about what, sir?
I had no idea about anything until a couple of weeks ago with the big town meeting. I didn't know that there was this group meeting up. I didn't know that there was an assessors department. The town doesn't do anything, in my opinion, to engage with people living in the town. I, like I said, this is the first of these meetings that I've come to. And the last town meeting was the first one that I've come to, and I've been here for a few years. I just noticed my taxes going up and I went, what the hell is going on? So, like, you're talking the good game about how we should be educated in the town, but I don't see anything on your end to, like, do that.
Well, with all due respect, sir, I think you need to pay a little bit better attention. Um, what, quite, no, quite, no, let me tell you what we've done. We had articles in the Express. We have had signs all over town. We have had meeting after meeting. We've had meetings, the school committee has had meetings. We've posted on Facebook, on social media. We've posted on the website. I don't know what else we could do to tell people about it. I, I really don't. I, I mean, I'm sorry if, if you, if you were not aware of it, and I appreciate where you're coming from.
I don't think I'm the only one either.
I don't, I, if, if we, we would love to hear suggestions on things that you think that we could improve on. We identified that, um, we've had a couple of strategic planning sessions where we're trying to talk about what we need to do to improve on anything, really. Um, and one of the things that we came up with was, we need to do better communicating. Because we all know what it's, what it was like before we were elected, trying to figure out what was going on in town. And we have, I, I actually have to say, the last two town meetings are the most communication I've seen in the thirty years I've lived here about town meeting, about any, anything happening in town. Um, I, I don't know how else we can reach people. I really sincerely don't. Um, I, I, if you have a suggestion, I mean, social me.
This is my first time here. I don't have a suggestion yet. I'm going to take some.
Well, you told us we needed to do better, so I'm.
I'm bringing a concern I have to you folks because you're my town officials. I don't have a suggestion yet. I'll think about the problem.
Okay. Well, we would love to hear from you. Uh, we'd, yes, Mr. Hill, just to, just to.
Can I say one thing? You can sign up with the town for emails.
Oh, yeah.
Anything that's going on in town, it will automatically email.
On the town website?
The town website, yes.
Well, I wouldn't.
If you could sign up with the district office.
No, 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 I was going to say, I wouldn't say anything that's going on in town, because it's, depends on the department. Each department posts updates and they might send, like, the water department, if there's restrictions, you'll get a newsletter about that. Or if there's like, say what?
I think it's called Civic Post. I signed up for years ago.
Yeah, you can check what things you'd be interested in. We've got a little, yeah.
You on here.
Yeah.
That is another resource.
And, 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 and we have beaten ourselves up. Is, is that why we don't have people showing up at town meeting?
Well, the other problem is, I commute from Chelmsford. I work in the DOD, uh, defense contractor. I, I build drones for the army. For me to get here, I have to brave two hours with the traffic and then skip having dinner with my family. So, you know, these times are very difficult. It's not like anyone is working in this town, or I should say relatively few people work in this town. They have to commute.
We actually used to meet at seven o'clock, um, and then we had somebody suggest that we bring it back to six thirty, because we were getting complaints that seven o'clock was too late. We've even toyed with having it on Saturday. We weren't, but then we get the parents with kids that are like, we're already oversubscribed. Like, so we're really trying to kind of like balance all of the competing needs. Um, and we're, um, I will say, annual town meeting by bylaw is the date that it is, but we can change the bylaw. We just have to do that at a town meeting. Uh, but it's always been, you know, the first, first Monday of May, um, and then the.
You also have YouTube. You have YouTube videos, plus if you, if you're an Xfinity member, you also have local access, you know.
We, we do get, um, you know, if you're just up at night, you have nothing better to do. Um, the meetings are recorded on Whitman Hanson Community Access Television, um, on YouTube. Um, and they are streamed live, um, again, but not just us, but like many of our other boards and committees are. Um, minutes are posted on the website, um.
Is there any way to interact with these boards if we can't make these meetings? Is there a place to send emails?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, that's all on, on, on our town website. There's contacts under each department, um, that you can, yeah, absolutely. Uh, is there a way to virtually participate in meetings? There was during COVID when it was permitted to do that, but now everybody's meeting in pers, person. So we don't have that component typically, unless we have like a guest who calls in. Um, but I, I understand what you're saying. We're, we're trying. And, and we will, anything that somebody could think of, we would love to, love to do. I mean, like I said, we had sandwich boards all around town. We had the electronic boards. We had.
Again, this was the, that effort was the first time I would do anything about all this.
Yeah. What was it that you, like, how, what was it that made you, like, what, what made you aware of it?
So, when my taxes on my house went up, I noticed it. And I was like, what the hell is this? And I saw signs up with various people protesting, whether it be the two A restrictions or whether it be, um, complaints about certain organizations in here. And I tried to find stuff online. Now, with the recent efforts, um, I had, I just, a cat get out and I needed help finding it. So I posted on the Hanson Board. And luckily for me, I saw there that people were posting, this is when the town meeting is, this is when that is, this is when this other thing is. And so I started looking. I finally having good links, I was able to start coming to these things. So.
Okay.
These efforts were the, the ones that I'd noticed, the ones on Facebook plus the signs around town. But it wasn't easy to find anything online.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah.
I'm still confused about this, uh, anti-two A legislation.
Three A?
That has nothing to do with us.
The two, no.
It's been posted around town telling me what I've seen and what, and I didn't see it in other towns, so I was trying to figure that out. So you're asking me what my experience.
I didn't say that. I.
No, I said it, yeah. I said that second amendment stuff has nothing to do with the town of Hanson. I am determining that. Yeah, it's, it's, people have signs up in the.
What I saw around town.
I understand that, but you'll see that in many.
Oh, I, I, I know what you're talking about. You mean the gun, the gun bill.
No, it's not. It's about the gun bill.
The gun bill or the MBTA community?
So, I think it's targeted at three A.
Three A is MBTA community.
That, that was a different one. That's also something I saw. But when I was trying to find these things on various issues in town, it was hard to find. So I did not know that there was a place that I could sign up for emails. I'm going to do that. Thank you very much. Um, but like, I'm in here and you guys are rehashing the information from the, the town meeting? But I thought that was done.
Right, we're posted to talk about that because we need to talk about next steps. So it's on our agenda. And we've spent a lot of time. So we are going to rehash it, because we need to figure out what our next move is and how we can do better and what we do for the setup, which is an override next year. So we're posted to talk about it, and I'm sorry if it sounds like we're rehashing it. But it's the first chance we've had to talk to one another because we can't talk to one another, other than in an open session, since town meeting. So, we've got a little bit to talk about because we've spent, like, the last two months trying to figure out what we were gonna do. Now, we know what happened. Now, we've got to figure out what we're gonna do. So, you know.
If this town had made the decision all those months ago, why did the town bring it up with different, more confusing wording again at the last meeting?
The town made the decision... Ms. Green, actually... Oh, you may not have been here when she explained that, I'm not sure. But the town voted no at the ballot and no at town meeting to the increased assessment above the 5%, which is what we had budgeted for. We sent it back as a result of that vote to the school committee, who then reconsideres, "Are we gonna change our assessment or not?" And they said, "Nope, we're not changing our assessment." That requires us to go back to the voters and ask again. The school committee has voted again to have the same assessment. Do you want to fund it? And people voted to fund it. Not with an override, but they did vote to fund it. So, we were required to do that. Trust me, if we had had any way of not having to do that, we would have taken that path. But that wasn't open to us, so... Okay.
And that brings us into laying people off.
That brings us into laying people off.
Part of this conversation, we were talking about repetition. This is why we repeat things, because sometimes people don't catch at a certain meeting where we're talking about it. So, we intentionally, strategically, like, go out of our way to try to repeat things so that people can get caught up at different phases of this. Because this has been like a six-month-long process. If you look at some of the YouTube videos of some of our meetings, we had brought up, actually intentionally, had pretty long debate around how confusing that wording is. And how it took about two or three meetings to really get it right. How do we actually do this so that it wasn't confusing on town meeting floor? So, you're kind of catching... You're catching some of those debates in real time.
Yeah. And quite honestly, we even talked about having it be several articles so that they were, like, separate and more... In my mind, it would have been clearer. But our town council insisted that it needed to be in one article and that it was clearer that way. And I think we found out that was not the case.
Which I want to bring up, actually, because we're talking about that. For the next town meeting, can we... I was kind of taken aback by the fact that we had spent three meetings talking about the wording of this article just to have it on the very last minute, town meeting floor, be like, "Well, this is too confusing. We're gonna do this instead." Can we not do that?
You missed the meeting just prior to town meeting. So, it wasn't... It was, we met three meetings before town meeting. And we had that conversation. Then the meeting before town meeting, we had the discussion that we couldn't do that.
No, I understand that. I know all the stuff.
But then he changed it.
But he changed it on town meeting floor. Like, that's what happened.
Oh, Sean, yeah.
Yeah, no. What I'm saying is exactly what I'm trying to say. So, I just liked, if we can just try... And I know we don't have necessarily control of this because town moderator can do what the town moderator needs to do. But I just... If we can avoid some of that stuff? Because it's like, it kind of eliminates the whole four meetings leading up to that.
I think he thought he was clarifying, but I think it-
No, it made it worse. The whole thing was a mess.
And I unfortunately think... I'm hoping people voted the way they meant to vote, but it was confusing on-
I didn't hear anybody say that they didn't vote the way that they meant to vote.
Yeah.
But I... I... Yeah. So, I didn't hear anybody say that.
Well, just because we're talking about this on the...
Yes.
That's my only feedback about-
I think that that article is worded in a very complex manner. And I'm sorry, I know it was supposed to be done in legal lease, but people need to be able to understand it.
I agree.
It was not easy to understand.
I agree.
It resonated with me when the woman stood... I forget her name. I'm sorry, I apologize. But when she stood up and she said, "I hear what you're saying, but I don't have in front of me, and I need to be able to see it."
Exactly, exactly.
And that's the thing.
The same thing on inner ear.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is what-
She made a good point. Mr. Young, did you have something?
Yeah, that was the only thing that really made me confused.
Yeah.
The Sean Keely's motion.
Right.
Because the best motion was right at the very end of the article.
Yeah.
It went to the very end of the article, there it was.
Yeah.
Right.
Easily understood. That should have been the motion.
Right.
Yeah. I totally agree with you.
Yep. Well, okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. So, Ms. Green, are you clear on the to-dos on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So, we need more info. And if you could just check out deregionalization, whether that would be an additional cost for us to revisit that. Okay. That brings us to our annual appointments list. And we've got an attachment here. And I think agricultural commission. I will entertain a motion to appoint...
These terms ended in a past. Is it handled in active?
No, just one of them did. Oh, two of them did. I don't know, Ms. McDowell, why do we have two terms that were in 2023?
Steve Krogan's are at 2023.
I did not get confirmation last year, so they were not approved at all.
Okay. So...
Well, last year, I was told it was being disbanded, which is why you never got a confirmation from me.
What is the length of three years for each of these appointments? Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to appoint Stephen Krogan, Anne Raine, Teresa Sancho Lucia, Michael Chernicki, and Ruth Sylvester for a term of two, of three years, beginning July 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Ambulance committee is actually not a committee.
Right.
That is an advisory group. And if we name it a committee, then you're subject to all kinds of things. But it's really just you guys doing your job and meeting about ambulance receipts. So, we're just gonna go past that. I will entertain a motion to appoint Mary Collins for a period of three years to Aging Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Bylaw committee, TJ Rolfe, Alexander Stewart, for a term of three years. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Cable internet. I will entertain a motion to appoint Carlos Caldas for a term of three years.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Camp Quaney, I gotta say something. My name was on that somewhere. And people are asking me, "Oh, well, you're on the Camp Quaney Commission." And I don't know where that came from. Am I on the Camp Quaney Commission? No.
You said you would be their liaison.
Liaison, okay. So, that's showing up as a committee member somewhere?
It might.
Is it on their website?
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Okay.
All right. Can you just check on that? And if Dory by some chance has it on the website, then can you change that? Capital improvement. I will entertain a motion to appoint Corinne Cufardo for a year of three... A period of three years, sorry.
Yep. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Did we do Camp Quaney?
Camp Quaney, Frank Alissi, Caroline Mills, and Sheila Morse. I will entertain a motion to appoint for three years.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Community preservation. The historical rep, we do not appoint. That is appointed by the historicals commission. I will entertain a motion to appoint Paul Sarah as a citizen-at-large for a period of three years.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Great. Conservation commission. I will entertain a motion to appoint David Mansfield for a period of three years.
So, second.
All in favor? Great. Council for Elder Affairs, Linda Philbrook, Robin Bousquet, Susan Gagnon, and June Sullivan for a period of three years.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Economic Development Committee, Laura Fitzgerald-Kemmett, Kevin Cohen, Christopher Ernst for a period of three years.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Energy Committee, James Armstrong, Marian Damasio, Edwin Hale, and John Murray. This says annual, so for a period of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Town historian, do we have to appoint that by vote? Okay. Like, for an annual appointment? Okay. For one year, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Plumbing inspector, I will entertain a motion for a period of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. High Street Park Committee. Is there anybody on here that...
Isn't going to be.
Isn't going to be.
Nope.
Okay. Including Mr. Clemens? Because he is no longer on conservation, and he was the conservation representative.
I have not received any resignations from anybody other than Marian Damasio.
Okay. Then we're gonna just kind of put a pin in Mr. Clemens and circle back because he was representing conservation. He can no longer represent conservation if he's not on conservation. They will need to appoint somebody else.
So, I guess that should be listed as a conservation-appointed member versus... Because the way this reads is that... I'm not even sure he knows that he's the conservation member.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Because Don Ellis is planning, and Phil was... And then the other guys were members-at-large. Can we circle back on that? But I will entertain a motion for Joseph Weeks, Robin Sparta-Carron, Kathy Gerhart, Donald Howard, and Anne Raine. For an annual...
Don Ellis.
Well, Don Ellis is appointed by planning.
Okay.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
So, what does that do to Phil Clemens? Do we need to then do another meeting?
Standby.
Yeah. He'll just have, yeah.
We're meeting on the first, so we'll figure it out.
Highway Building Committee, annual appointment, Charlie Baker, Anne Raine, Stephen Graham, Highway Director. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Historic Commission, Marcus Lynn, Lawrence Mills, John Sodakis, and I'm sorry if I killed that, Amy Broderick, for a period of one year. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. As far as McQuaid Property Reuse Committee, I don't-
You don't want to do that.
I don't feel like... I mean, really, Thomas Labo, Joyce Cameron... All right. I guess we can... I don't know.
Do you want to just do the two of them, since everybody else is more represented?
Yes. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Thomas Labo and Joyce Cameron for a period of one year.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. North River Commission. I will entertain a motion to appoint Jennifer Heiney and John Kemmett as alternate for a period of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I'm abstaining. Old Colony Elderly Services. I will entertain a motion to appoint Mary Collins for a period of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Old Colony Planning Council, Antonio De Freys and Joseph Campbell as an alternate. I will entertain a motion to appoint.
So moved.
For a period of one year. Okay. All in favor? Open Space, Joseph Campbell and Pam Ross. I will entertain a motion to appoint for one year.
So moved.
Second.
Why does it say planning designated?
I think we don't need to probably vote for Joe because I think he's being appointed by planning.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Parks and Fields, Michael Jostelin, Adam Valachovic, Valkovic. I will entertain a motion to appoint for one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Planning Board, I don't know that he's selected, so...
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Private Road Oversight Committee, Highway Director, Michael Dunn, Michael Mix, and Anthony Sacco. Who are Michael Dunn and Anthony Sacco?
I don't know who they are. They... I have never spoke to either one of them.
Can we look into that? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if they're police officers or... Can we just look into that one? Special Police Officers, Kevin McCarthy, Brian Watson, Eugene Andrews, Richard Eldridge, Mark Poirier, and Richard Eldridge, a sailor of weights and measures. I will entertain a motion to appoint them for an annual appointment.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Okay. Uh, Stormwater and Drainage Committee, Ernest B. Amato Junior, David Mansfield, Edwin Hale, Donald Howard, and we don't need to vote on Paul Benano because he's Planning Rep for an annual appointment. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And here we go, Safety Development Committee, those two guys are under.
What'd he say?
Safety Development, it's again, Michael Dunn and Anthony Sacco.
Yeah, can we look into those?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, TIF, um, is Kevin Sullivan, Don Ellis, um, Lauren Fitzgerald, Kemmet, and Denise Alexander. I mean, we can vote on it, but really, it's, it's a committee where we're asking for each committee to send somebody. So, but I will entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And Zoning Board of Appeals, um, we have got Mr. Buckley up for, um, a period, uh, is that an annual, um, no, that's a three-year term, okay. Um, did anybody want to make a motion to appoint Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay. Um, not hearing a second. Um, I will, I think we'll just conclude that portion of our, um, agenda. Um, okay. And of course, I've lost my agenda, so that's, thank you. We will, without the appointment of Mr. Buckley, we will need to have, um, somebody on the zoning board of appeals. Is there somebody here who wants to serve on the zoning board of appeals?
Isn't that a conflict, having?
No.
So they meet at the same time that we meet, right?
They meet at the same time.
They do, but you could schedule it for a night that's not a night we're meeting. Okay, all right. Um, okay, more to come on that, clearly. Um, okay, uh, 2024 Annual Licensing, Common Victuals License for Hanson Historical Society, Ms. Green.
I need to talk about this. Yes, for the time of, um, our licensing, Kurt Hopfes was not available to focus on this. So it kind of fell by the wayside. I believe they're getting ready for the Strawberry Festival and realized that they need to have this. Do you have a strawberry festival? So they sent me an opportunity.
They already had the strawberry festival. It was like June fourteenth, I think, or something like that.
So the fee is waived for them? The fee is waived for them? It's just for that, that they have it?
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve, um, in, well, actually, okay, so it's, it's, it's good for them till the end of the year, right? Okay, to approve the common victual license for the Hanson Historical Society.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, and then that brings us to approve Hanson Family Fun Day on Town Green. Um, I'm trying to find the date here. Um, it is eight seventeen from eleven to two. It's always a very toasty day, the day that they have that meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, Hanson Family Fun Day on Town Green for August seventeenth from eleven to two.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, appoint James Gillen as Camp Kiwanee lifeguard. Um, you'll notice that this was an update, um, there was a, um, I would say a little bit of a staffing, um, issue at, uh, Cranberry Cove, and they had to reduce their hours as a result, so I'm hopeful that perhaps with his appointment that this might help. Um, I will entertain a motion to appoint James Gillen as a Camp Kiwanee lifeguard.
So moved, second.
Okay.
If you need anybody else, my niece is looking for.
Um, Ms. Green?
There, there was an, there was an additional name. Um, she only sent me that one. So there was this one here, um, John Linum.
Oh, yeah.
There, there was supposed to be two names on that.
What's the second name?
Uh, it's John Linum.
John Linum.
Um, for, this is a.
And he has, um, all the.
He has all the, he holds all the required certifications for lifeguard.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint John Linum as a lifeguard.
So moved.
At Camp Kiwanee. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And anything else on that, Ms. Green?
No, that was, that was it.
Okay. Um, okay, that brings us to set board and town administrator goals. Um, did you guys want to take a look at the master plan and, or do you want to just kind of power through? We've got some in front of us. Um, and Ms. Green, did you want to say anything or do you just want me to, to kind of go through these?
Um, I, I had, I had taken a, a look at them, um, and have already kind of checked off the goal, the projects that I'm already working on.
Okay, so, um, for, it's set up in several, um, there's several areas, uh, for goals. Um, and one, the first area is governance, and it would be, um, you know, commence union negotiations, obviously develop a communication plan for each town meeting, work with, um, Board of Selectment-appointed boards to establish priorities, modernize and standardize, um, there's a typo in that, Ms. McDowell, there's a typo, uh, modernize and standardize, um, human resource processes and policies, um, revise and amend select board policies and town bylaws, to be clear, concise and consistent, uh, prepare a handbook for town board and committee volunteers to assist in onboarding new volunteers, uh, recurring monthly inspectors meeting with land use boards for the purpose of streamlining application process. There's something funky here on line ten. Um, ensuring there is a robust, I think this might be all, uh, part of line nine.
Line nine.
Yep. Um, identify departmental goals and review progress with the town administrator at the beginning and the end of the fiscal year. Uh, recruit and provide direction to Recreation Commission, coordinate with High Street Park, Camp Koish, okay, that's, update town master plan. Um, and then for budget, continue to prepare reimbursement requests for CARES Act monies for Plymouth County Commissioners, submit eligible expenditures for ARPA, develop a robust townwide unified communications plan, follow through on existing grants, um, explore other grant opportunities for town hall HVAC, archiving of public records, et cetera. Explore ways to reduce costs, increase revenues, solicit ideas from employees and citizens, ambulance billing collections, green communities grant funding opportunities, sales of the remaining tax title properties, and consider increasing local meals tax to one percent. Any, anything on that, guys? Okay. Um, economic development, draft, draft and review policy for outdoor dining with alcohol. Town with capital, town will capitalize on the use of town-owned property and assets. Um, LED streetlight conversion and support the economic development of Main Street. Some of these are a little loose. I think we need to tighten them up a bit, but I, I get where you're going, but I think they need to be a little bit more specific. Um, communication and stakeholder outreach, um, develop a user-friendly website, hold quarterly meetings with FinCom Chair, WHRSD Representative and Select Board Representative, improve access to and inform, uh, to and information regarding recreation trails. Improve workplace environment via employee engagement, continue to improve comprehensive citizen engagement plan to increase information sharing, attendance at town meeting and membership on boards, committees, including town websites, social media, printed media, cable interviews, in addition to meeting with civic and religious organizations. Um, town-wide improvements, explore and develop digital record system, host Hanson Day, host, well, we're not hosting the Great Pumpkin Car Show. Uh, work with the senior center and library to determine how to meet each group's needs by using current library with improvements or development plan for McQuan Property, monitor progress of both the recreational long-term use of Hanson's ponds, complete comprehensive building needs assessment, um, hold visioning session and explore restructuring how recreation programs are managed, continue hosting half-day strategic planning retreat at Camp Kiwanee, continue to pursue fireworks site cleanup and remediation, and implement the new town volunteer database and volunteer card recruitment process. Um, okay, so, oops, we've got one more page here. Um, engage community in visioning and decision-making, develop a communications plan to expand beyond social media to engage with residents.
This is the town administrators.
Yeah, these are, yeah, identify key positions to be, okay. So I think we have a little cleaning up to do on this, Ms. McDowell, it's, um, it's a good start.
Very good start.
Yeah, and, but it's everything, everything in the kitchen sink, so we've got to, um, we've got to prioritize and maybe winnow this down a little bit. Um, do people want to look through this and let Ms. McDowell know, um, which goals are the most important to them to set for, um, Ms. Green? And then.
I got a quick question, and maybe you can point me to where it is on here, but, um, I'm, I'm really kind of passionate about this policy procedure thing, getting that manual in and up and running.
Definitely is in here. I, I just read something, I don't know where it was.
I was trying to hear it as you were saying it, but it's not jumping out at me, and I just don't want it to get lost.
Right here, it's, no, modernize and standardize human resource process and policies.
There were things that were, that sounded similar to it, but.
Yeah.
It's.
Revise and amend select board policies and town bylaws to be clear, concise, and consistent. That's number seven under governance.
So would you interpret that as, as really like having a robust in, I mean, we don't really, it, right, it's, we do have a policy procedure manual, but, but it's not, and we've been going through this project for about.
Why don't we just add, add number seventeen on to the town administrator goals, just to be very clear?
Totally fine, I still, I still want to be super redundant.
So we'll say, um, develop, um, policies.
Is it really like, I know we've been talking about all these procedures, getting.
And, and the town bylaws.
Town evaluations, department evaluations, things like that, all of these things kind of run into that, and I don't know where it sits on there.
Um, so Ms. McDowell, can you add on to the town administrator, um, goals, um, develop, uh, personnel policies and procedures manual? And.
I also like to see the little evaluations caught up.
That's definitely in here.
So it's, it's spelled out in there?
That's spelled out.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's definitely in here. Um, implement performance reviews and professional development plans for all staff.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and anyway, it's not speak now forever, hold your peace, this is the first pass at it, so.
What we need, some of them I think could be reordered a little.
I think there's a little bit of redundancies, some of them, the wording could be tightened up a little bit. Um, did somebody want to volunteer to work with Ms. McDowell to take another pass at, um, at winnowing this down and clarifying it a little bit?
I can help her.
Okay.
If I, if I can come in.
All right, great.
I, I knew I put a lot in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we just have to rearrange some stuff and.
Yeah, great. Okay, it's a start, it's a darn good start, so, um, okay, great, so, um, not to put too fine a point on it, but, um, what's our ETA that you think you guys might be able to?
I'm here next week if you want to come in, I think it'll be quiet in town home.
Do you think you might have it shaped up for our?
But Thursday is the holiday.
Um, we have it shaped up for our July ninth meeting, or am I getting overly ambitious?
You're getting overly ambitious.
All right, how about July twenty-third?
That's more like it.
All right.
I, I have to work everything around my, I have to, in the middle of the day, I have to take my mother for her.
All right, well, we can do that, I'm just thinking it's going to be quiet, we can do it.
This Thursday, actually, is, I, I don't have any, I don't have.
That's fine.
All right, and in the interim, if you guys have any, um, anything that you want to have added, then just let, um, Ms. McDowell know, and then they can try to work it into the, um, into this document. Um, okay, great. Um, and I have now lost my agenda, okay. Um, I know. Uh, okay. That brings us to, uh, meeting minutes for June eleventh. I will entertain a motion to approve the open meeting minutes from June eleventh.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the open meeting minutes from June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, that brings us to one-day liquor licenses. Uh, we have a six sixteen twenty-four, uh, Wendy Rapsin, seven fourteen twenty-four, Gina McCarthy, eight eighteen twenty-four, Corey Cuddy. I will entertain a motion to approve those one-day liquor licenses.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, committee updates, Economic Development Committee, we are meeting, uh, tomorrow night, and I'm wildly excited because we have got the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, um, coming to our meeting, and, um, this is the first time that Hanson's really even discussed being part of a chamber of commerce, and I don't know what will come out of it. I hope I'm not being overly, uh, positive about it, but, um, I'm looking forward to it. So, um, we've also begun, um, preparing for Hanson Day, um, and with, you know, um, reaching out to businesses on that. Um, and tomorrow night is also, um, the Hanson Business Network, um, meeting, which is open to anybody who operates a business in Hanson. Uh, that will be at Meadowbrook, um, and, um, we will, that's our year-end kind of networking. So if you are a business, uh, join us. Um, and it is, um, also, we're co-hosting Hanson Day with the Economic Development Committee. Um, High Street Park Committee.
The only, um, real update we have is our next meeting is July first, and we have special guests, Lisa and Tony, that are going to give us some updates in some directions on where we can kind of take the committee. So that, that's really about it. So if somebody, again, reminder, they're all open meetings, so if people are interested, July first is a good one to attend.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. Um, Highway Committee, anything?
No, we need, no, we haven't had a highway director to meet with.
Okay. Um, McQuan Property Reuse, um, we're going to have the forum in, uh, September, where we're going to have the public come and help us decide the future of McQuan, um, so we're going to put a pin in that. Um, Recreation Commission, um, we don't have anything on that. Whitman-Hanson Regional School Agreement Committee, um, uh, Fred Small from the school committee has been appointed as the school committee, uh, representative to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Agreement Committee. Um, did we have anybody on our board that wanted to be part of that, um, committee? Um, and just to be clear, we already have an agreement, um, but there are parts of it that need to be refreshed. Um, they've got, they've got some old schools that are listed in there, um, they've, you know, just, they've got a lot, you know, there's some, uh, they've got to sync it up with, um, current laws versus old laws that they're referring to, just a little tidying up. Uh, but there is also, um, some discussion about, um, discussing the method of reimbursement uh, for, uh, or allocating the reimbursement that we get from the state, um, for busing. Um, and changing what Whitman pays versus what Hanson pays. Um, and I, I don't know, I, I, I just need to lay my cards on the table with you guys. I don't see any incentive for us to have that conversation. Um, they're looking to, um, there are certain people, um, that are looking to have Hanson pick up more of the, um, busing costs. Um, right now, it's, um, it's done, um, not by mileage, and, uh, there are people who would like to do it by mileage, which would, um, change the allocation formula so that Hanson is paying more. Um, honestly, the agreement that's in place is valid. It, it just has some antiquated language in it, maybe some schools that don't need to be referred to, but the guts of the agreement are still valid, um, and the way that that agreement is written, um, it stands on its own, even if parts of it are inaccurate. Um, so I, I, I don't know if anybody wants to be on the regional agreement committee.
I'm not saying yes yet.
Oh, I saw, I saw a motion over there.
But if we are, if we don't have representation on the committee, does that mean they can just do it without us?
No, because they, uh, the committee, the agreement has to come before the select board and then a town meeting to be approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just think it's a good idea. I mean, you got some people on this board that have really strong opinions about this, and we're always talking about people getting their voice heard, so this is an opportunity to get your voice heard.
Do you know, you, you, are you on it now?
I was on it.
You were on it. How often does it meet?
It was, um.
At, at what?
It was inconsistent, yeah. I would say maybe once a month, um, but that, then it.
I, I'm just on a lot of other committees, I'm not sure.
I feel the same way.
I, I would, I would, I would do it if it would fit into my schedule, but I don't know that they want to be changing their schedule.
I can't because I, I work those two nights. I just don't have, I don't have the availability. The only, I could do is Thursday night.
Oh, I don't know what night they're meeting. That, that's up to, um.
And, you know, I'm on this, I'm on the high street parks, Monday night's a big night for me, I work.
And you're going to find out really quick that it's really hard to get a high street park committee meeting together because everybody is on a thousand committees.
Right, no, I understand that.
So those, those meetings are very.
All right, well, we'll put a pin on that, and, and then, um, I guess when they officially ask us for a representative, you guys, you can think about.
I need to retire.
You guys can think about it. Um, all right, any other committee updates? Okay. Um, Ms. Green, Town Administrator Report.
Um, I'm chair and a vice chair members of the board, so, um, first and foremost, I, I would like to recognize, uh, everyone who worked hard to bring the June seventeenth special town meeting together. Um, again, although it was just the one article, there was a lot, much communication, um, to deliver the significance of it, of the town meeting vote, um, and to get the information out there so people could understand it. So I want to recognize, um, my staff, Ms. McDowell, Ms. Greg, um, the town clerk, uh, Charlie Baker, um, Jason Cook, is that his name from the IT? Uh, Jason Cook, who's IT with the schools, who did a great job with, uh, making sure the warrants were on the television screens and things like that. Uh, so I just want to recognize everybody for a great job that night. In from Highway Director Kurt McLean and myself, are, will be holding interviews this Thursday for highway director positions. Um, we expand, we increased the salary, um, we expanded the, um, area of which we advertised, and we did get some additional, um, applicants, so we're going to be holding interviews. Um, we're, we're hopeful that we're going to have a good candidate and hopefully can make a decision. If not, then we'll re, um, we'll repost it, um, but we're hopeful. The Bristol County Agricultural High School Student Transportation, um, as the board remembered, we had to bring on somebody rather quickly to transport two students from Hanson, one student from Whitman, uh, to Bristol County Agricultural High School. We really didn't have the opportunity to send that out for bid. However, um, with the school year now being over, the bid is out there, invitation for bid, uh, for transportation companies to put the bid in. It's on our website under procurement, it is, um, and it'll be in the Whitman-Hanson Express this Thursday, it's on COMBI, so hopefully we'll get some good bids for the transportation for those three students. Uh, we did get the acceptance list from the superintendent, and it's still the same three students, um, so we'll wait.
I am hoping it's part of the, what's being, the house, the, um, about what the legislature is looking at for increases. One of the increases is in regional transportation, uh, for, um, you know, Aggie and, and Votech.
So I, I did, um, now, because the town pays for this on their own, um, we don't benefit from any of that reimbursement. However, I did get some contacts finally, um, from Superintendent Simonak to reach out to Adessi to see how we can fill out the paperwork to get reimbursed for the transportation that we pay for. Um, it's been a, a challenge to find some contacts at, at Desi on this, so.
How much have we spent so far approximately on this?
Uh, we spent last year, we spent, um, I want to say about twenty-six thousand dollars just to transport the, the two students. Um, that's just on our side. Whitman, um, I believe Whitman was about thirteen thousand dollars, so it's quite a hefty bill. Um, but anyway, we'll see what we get from that. Um, with the Assistant Assessor position becoming available, the process has begun to fill that position, um, and we hopefully will have the position filled by the end of July. I received the, uh, insurance renewal quote from Maya, and I am happy to report that basically three years later, we are still saving money on our insurance with Maya than what we were paying the, the year prior. It has gone up a little bit every year, how, however, right now, we're still saving an average of twenty thousand dollars over our insurance costs over the years. Um, and also, with the town employees participating in trainings, free trainings that Maya, um, offers, we get credits towards, that we can apply towards our premium. So this year, we are receiving five thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars worth of credits, uh, to apply towards our premium. And also, if we pay our premium in full by August first, we receive an additional six thousand dollar discounts for a total of eleven thousand dollars in discounts off of our premium. So we're still saving money, we are receiving huge benefits for free training, getting credits towards our premium, and we save if we pay in full by August first, which we have done, done the last three years. I received a, a request from Verizon, um, from a Philip Wood, who is the, um, Government Affairs Representative. Um, they're looking for a letter from support from myself as they are applying to the Massachusetts Broadband Institute for a broadband infrastructure gap network, gap network grant, um, which could potentially start the process to bring FIOs to the town. Network Grant, which could potentially start the process to bring Fios to the town of Hanson. So I did, I did draft the letter and send it to them, and.
Fios, television?
Internet.
I, I have access to Fios internet on State Street.
There are some areas in town that do not, so this would cover the areas of town that don't have that.
I think because you're close to staying in over, I think, is that what?
So, like I said, this is just a very beginning process, it's not saying it's coming, it's just they needed a lot of support to apply for this program, to hopefully bring the infrastructure to Hanson, to offer Fios to people, so I will keep the board up to date as I hear anything. I may not, if they don't get this, the grant, I may not hear anything, but they said they may try for it again at the next round, so a little, you know, little hope that we might have somebody other than Comcast.
Would that include television? Would it include cable?
They, they only said broadband.
No, because right now, if you get Fios, you have to do a satellite.
Yeah, they only talked about broadband, so my guess is it's only for internet infrastructure. I'm going to hopefully try and take some vacation time, July 2nd, 3rd, and 5th, and the select board's office will be closed on Friday, July 5, and that actually concludes my town administrator report for today.
Okay.
I got a question. If I heard you correctly, that the two students that needed transportation, one was from Whitman.
No, there's three students.
There's three.
Two, two, two students are Hanson and one, one student is Whitman. We're not paying for the Whitman, we, yeah, we don't, yeah.
We're paying $26,000.
Well, they're paying 13.
And they're paying 13?
Because they only have one student, we have two.
How far away do these kids live from each other?
Well, the, the transportation company goes to each house.
It's door to door.
It's door to door.
And they're all riding in the same vehicle?
They're riding in the same vehicle.
Mm-hmm. Right. Seems a little steep to me.
It's extremely steep.
It's very.
26 and 13.
It's very expensive, we know. Unfortunately, it's what we have to pay to get these students to the Bristol Agricultural.
Hanson, how far away, I mean, are these kids, are they like, live close to each other, it's like, how can they justify doubling the price, because you're picking up two, you're picking up two kids in the same town.
Unfortunately, I did not.
They were picking up a kid in Hanover, a kid in Hanson, and one in Whitman, it was like scattered all around, I could see the double in the price.
It's per person.
It's per person.
Basically, but I didn't have any control over what they were going to charge.
We had to just do it, it had to be done. Now we can go up to bid.
It's private companies, it's, it's not through first.
And they're charging 13,000 per kid, basically.
Basically, yes, it's, it's very expensive.
Highway robbery, yeah.
Of course it is.
That's why I'm going to, I'm going to.
They're making out on that deal.
I'm going to try and figure out the, the paperwork and the applications to get Hanson some reimbursement for that. It's been a challenge, I have been trying to figure it out and find the resources to do it, and I have not been successful. The Adessi website is not easy to navigate, I have made phone calls, I've left messages, I've got no responses.
You got to get the kids to school.
We're required by law. We're required by law, and there's, there's no, so basically, they could take a first student, however, there's no transportation to get them from here to Pembroke, so we would still have to get them from here to Pembroke, and then they would take a bus from Pembroke to Middleborough, and then switch to another bus that gets them down to Bristol Agricultural Aggie. We would still be paying for that bus service, we'd end up paying it as it is, and by doing this, we've taken probably two to three hours of a school, of the day, you know, we've, we've added two or three hours to the student outside of school.
Right.
So the parents are very appreciative of, of this type of transportation.
Okay, I, did anybody have any other questions? I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we're going to go to executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, deputy police chief. Executive session pursuant, pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares. Litigation discussions, highway union, administrative professionals union. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline, or dismissal, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual, and executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released, June 11th, 2024, I will entertain a motion, we will not be returning to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.